All right. Time being 6:30 p.m. I would like to call the Board of Selectmen January 8, 2024, meeting to order. And as we always do, in tradition with the Board of Selectmen, we start off with a pledge of allegiance. If you could please join us for the pledge of allegiance and continue and remain standing for a moment of silence for Elizabeth Slinger.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Selectwoman Suzanne Justburg?
I'd like a moment of silence for one of our COA board members. She was a longtime Abington resident. She was part of a member of the Friends. She was also a member of the Garden Club. Betty Slinger passed on December 31 after a short illness, and she will be very missed by everyone who was all her seniors and part of the COA. So please, join me for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Just because we do have Selectmen Demazio on virtual, on Zoom, just a clarification that for every vote that we do take tonight, it will be a roll call vote. We are, you know, five-member board, all present, so that's great. Now over to public announcements. Mr. Donovan?
I do not have any.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Justburg?
No, I do not have any.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Chapin?
I'll use tonight, Ellen.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Demazio, any public announcements?
No.
All right. Thank you. I do have a couple. Notice of annual town election to be held on Saturday, April 27, 2024. Nomination papers are available from the town clerk. Nomination papers must be submitted to the town clerk's office for certification of voters by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, March 11, 2024. Abington Celebrates has announced their 2024 celebration seasons. The second annual townwide yard sale on Saturday, April 13. Founder's Day weekend on June 7 through the 9th. Oktoberfest weekend, October 4 through the 6th. And Abington Celebrates Christmas 13 through the 15th. And also, I want to wish a very special and happy belated birthday to Abington's oldest living veteran, Skinny Pozak. Skinny turned 103 on January 3, and he served in World War II as a U.S. Marine. Skinny wasn't able to attend last week's Veterans Breakfast at Martin's Restaurant for Health, but we are happy to report Skinny was released back home on Friday. Skinny and his family and our Veterans Services Department wants to thank everyone for their cards of good health, support, prayers. Happy birthday to Skinny, and thank you for your service. With that being said, there are no more public announcements. Are there any public comments from the audience? All right. Hearing none. Okay. We will go to our first action and discussion item, request for appointment to Conservation Commission voting member position. We did have a opening on the Conservation. Tim Warner served on the Conservation Commission for a number of years, and I just want to thank Tim Warner for his service on the Conservation Commission. He was a wealth of knowledge and a huge volunteer for this town, so, you know, thank you to Tim Warner. We did receive two applicants for the Conservation Commission voting member. The two applicants are Alex Bezanson and Brian Bezanson. We do have--
Alex Bezanson.
Benson. Benson. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Brian Benson. Excuse me. The two applicants, Alex Bezanson and Brian Benson. We do have the applicants here before us tonight. We do have their applications before us. In order of the applicants received, we will invite the applicants up for any questions and comments. Please state your name and address and why you'd like to be appointed to the Conservation Commission. So in order of applicants applied, the first is Alex Bezanson. And please state your name and address and why you'd like to be appointed.
Alex Bezanson, 761 Randolph Street. Thank you. I want to be appointed because I have experience on the board many years, and there's an opening, and I apply.
Is there any questions or comments from the board?
I do if I could. Mr. Bezanson, I guess my concern with when we make these appointments, and particularly on the Conservation Commission, is that I want to ensure that the people in town are treated fairly. And clearly, when members go on the Conservation Commission, I want to ensure that they're not going on, and if an applicant comes before them, they're not in a position, whether they like the applicant, don't like the applicant, like the project or don't like the project. I guess I'd like to know your philosophy in terms of, in my view, it's the four corners of the law. And if a person comes in, regardless of the project, and they meet the requirements of the four corners of the law, then in my opinion, they have to be approved. What I don't want to see is using tactics to further the residents' inability to move forward. And what that I mean is that unnecessarily charging them with, we want you to get more engineering reports, or we want to do this, that, and the other thing, Woodlands Protection. I understand the law. I understand the applicant process, and I understand the needs. At certain periods of time, you're going to need this information. But I am very sensitive, because I've received a number of complaints in the manner, and I've addressed these complaints with the town manager. And I want to ensure that anybody else we put on the board, that they, I would like to know their philosophy in those terms. So having said that, could you kindly address--
Well, when I was on the board before, my philosophy was, and always has been, that if they meet the Mass regulations and the town bylaws, we have to approve it. It has nothing to do with water. It has nothing to do with zoning. It has nothing to do with planning, and it has nothing to do whether we want more apartments or anything. Do they meet the regulations under the Commonwealth, and do they meet the Abington bylaws? If they do, then I approve it. And DEP reviews every filing. And if the town did make a mistake, DEP will pick it up, because the project can't start until they receive a DEP registration number. That means DEP has reviewed it. The problem with the town denying problems is then the applicant appeals to DEP, and we lose some of our powers in enforcing those things. So my policy has always been, if they meet the regulations, both Commonwealth and town, I approve it.
Okay. And how many years did you serve previously? You mentioned you had served a number of years. How many--
Twenty-three years on the Conservation Commission.
Twenty-three. Thank you.
And I have quite a bit of MAC training, Massachusetts Association Conservation Commissions. Back in the day, we actually attended all the meetings on Saturdays and classes and things like that.
Okay. And lastly, we've been having an issue of obtaining a quorum. You know, if appointed, obviously, your commitment in terms of attending the meetings is--
I'll bet in all the boards in the time I've served in town, you can count on a hand the number of meetings I've missed.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one. Mr. Bezanson, Alex, do you come before the Conservation Commission at any, personally, business-wise?
No. I closed out my corporation in December 31 of 2019. I'm kind of semi-retired now.
Because sometimes I have, like, an issue of, like, conflict of interest--
No, definitely. Yeah. No, I'm not--
People coming up or, you know, associates.
I'm not building any houses or anything like that anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Demazio?
No, no comment, no questions.
Scott, I do just have one question. Out of the complaints and appeals, how many of them have been granted or reversed in this timeframe that we're talking about in the last couple of years with this Conservation Commission?
I'm not sure I'm following the question. I don't actually--
If an applicant can appeal the Conservation Commission's decision, how many of them have been overruled?
I don't know.
So I'm taking none, then?
No. I'm not taking none at all. I'm saying I don't know. And I believe you have some. The chairman of the Conservation Commission would be better suited to answer that question.
Chair recognizes Chair of Conservation. State your name and address, please.
Paul Bunker, 19 Peregrine Road, Chairman, Abington, Concon. I've been on for, I think, three years this month, and my time, I think, was one superseding order that was granted, and that had nothing to do with the applicant. It was a neighbor that appealed to DEP.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bunker. All right. Is there any other things to be heard from the board for this applicant?
Just Tim.
Oh, Tim? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bezanson.
Thank you.
All right. The other applicant we have is Mr. Brian Benson. My apologies, mispronouncing your name earlier. Sure, just come off the podium. Name and address, please, and why you'd like to be appointed to Conservation Commission.
I'm Brian Benson, 414 Woodlands Way. I was before you back in June when I was appointed to the Open Space Committee. And I heard about the opening on this and think there's, heard about the potential opportunity for synergy and collaboration between the two committees, given that outside of the development review process the Conservation Commission does, there's lots of potential shared interests around open space. I think there could be an opportunity to have a liaison almost between those two boards who can help to collaborate on shared priorities and even just keep lines of communication open between the two entities.
All right. Thank you.
And happy to continue serving the town in an additional capacity.
All right. Thank you. I will now turn it over to the board for questions.
Mr. Benson, you heard what I had articulated before. I can repeat it, or do you want to address--
No, I think I can address it.
Okay.
The answer is pretty similar. I think you have to operate within the bounds of the regulations. I earned a graduate degree from Bridgewater in public administration, so part of that is definitely work, teaching how to work and operate on boards like this, or at least operate within town government and the public sector. So I think that instills certainly values of fairness and equity and working within the bounds of the laws. I'm sure there are processes outside of an individual development review to try and change town or state regulations, if there was a desire to do that.
Okay. And in terms of attendance at the meetings?
Yeah, I should be able to attend them. I don't foresee that being an issue.
Great. Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board? All right. Okay. There are no questions from me.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Oh, Mr. Demazio, I'm sorry. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
No, I do not.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Benson. All right. I will now turn it over to the public, or any point of public comment from the audience? All right. In hearing none, in the authority of the chair, I will close public comment for this particular agenda item. And I will now turn it back over to the Board of Selectmen for further discussion. I will not take in any motions at this time just yet. I'm just waiting to hear comments.
Well, I think a couple of things, if I may. One, if we refer, because we have on different occasions, to the Selectmen's handbook. And when we look at our policies, procedures within the Selectmen's handbook, it indicates that in all appointments that are made by the Selectmen, by judging all candidates on merit, experience, and qualifications only. And I think we have to remember one thing here, that this is a finite board that has certain statutory authority that has to be addressed, and it has an impact. It has a defined impact on the people of Abington when they make application for various unsundry things. What we also have is a position of associate member. And in Mr. Benson's case, I like the idea where he's indicated, you know, he wanted to see that bridge between open space and conservation. And I'm wondering if it would be better suited appointing him as an associate member so that he gets that experience working on conservation, you know, and provide that catalyst, you know, to advise both boards and then be in a position then to see exactly what the conservation does. My concern, as I've stated in the past, is I'm very attuned, and I've received, again, several complaints that I have addressed, and I want to ensure that whoever goes on that board is fair, equitable, and works within the four corners of the law. And again, I don't want to see favoritism, not favoritism, you like the project, you don't like the project. That's immaterial. You're there to apply the law. If the applicant meets the provisions of the law, then the vote should very, quite simply be yes, we move to approve it. If you need, you know, further justification, then okay, but I'm not interested in seeing the applicants, you know, pennied and dimed so that they end up walking away from the project because they can't afford it. So those are my thoughts from that standpoint. And I'll be prepared to make a motion when the time comes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Anything else from the board? Ms. Justburg?
I did want to say that I do like the liaison between open space and conservation. I think the two mix do both enhancement to these things. I do agree that I want the people of Abington to be treated fairly within the law. And I, in some situations, I do believe in the, have associates, but sometimes the associates get drowned out by the actual board, so I'm not a big fan of having an associate on the board. I feel like you should, if you want us to be on the board, then be nominated for the board. And that's just my opinion.
All right. Any comments from Mr. Chapin?
No, not for trouble.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from Mr. Demazio?
If we were to do an associate member, would they have the voting rights if it was, someone didn't show for the meeting, another Concon member?
I do not--
No, they do not.
No, they'd have no voting rights.
All right. Anything further from the board? Mr. Demazio, Mr. Chapin, Ms. Justburg, Mr. Donovan? All right. That being said, I do have some comments. And I have them written out here, and I will submit them to Nancy for the record and for Comments from Selectman Alex Hagerty for Conservation Commission appointment, January 8, 2024. In fairness with our residents, I feel I have to say this. On November 4, 2022, during the annual town meeting vote and discussion on the proposed new marijuana production and cultivation overlay district zoning amendments, Articles 13, 14, 15, and 16. In his capacity at the time as a selectman, Mr. Bezanson spoke multiple times on the floor of town meeting in support of the creation of the overlay district and publicly expressed support for a specific cultivator to set up shop in the district. That same evening, after the annual town meeting at Lucy's Bar, myself and others were present to hear Selectman Alex Bezanson state, and I quote, "The town is living in the past. With this vote tonight, the town just cost me $2.3 million," end quote. To which I asked Selectman Bezanson, and I quote, "What do you mean by that, Alex?" To which I asked Selectman Bezanson, and I quote, excuse me, end quote, to which Selectman Bezanson replied, and I quote, "The cultivator who wanted to set up the district was going to give me a cut." Let me repeat this again. Selectman Bezanson stated to me and others, "The town just cost me $2.3 million. The cultivator who wanted to set up in the district was going to give me a cut."
Do you have any proof of this? This is a serious accusation, just don't-- I want to make sure that you're aware of what you're doing right now.
Mr. Bezanson, Mr. Chapin, these are my comments. I was present.
Okay.
And there's also a state ethics investigation into this matter as well.
That's a negative fact. I just want you, I'm just trying to--
Oh, I understand. I was there. This is my account, unless you want to call me a liar. Alex Bezanson previously served on the Abington Conservation Commission until 2013. On January 8, 2013, Mr. Bezanson submitted to the Abington Board of Selectmen his letter of resignation. According to Alex Bezanson's resignation letter from the Conservation Commission on January 8, 2013, he stated in his opinion, and I quote, "Selectmen Andy Burbine and Mike Franny have encouraged the Powers family in doing anything in their power to disrupt this board," end quote. To date, no wrongdoing Alex Bezanson accused Selectman Burbine and Selectman Franny of has been identified or any action taken for such accusations. Further, in Alex Bezanson's resignation letter, he stated, I quote, "This was evident at the Selectmen's meeting on December 10, 2012, when Mr. Burbine pushed to have a letter from Powers attorney, his former law partner, on the agenda without inviting the Conservation Commission to the meeting," end quote. According to documentation, days before the December 10, 2012 meeting, Alex Bezanson, chair of the Conservation Commission, was notified of the meeting, and during the afternoon of December 10, 2012, Alex Bezanson called Selectman Franny to say he couldn't attend the meeting. Alex Bezanson was very much aware of the Selectmen's meeting. According to documentation, December 10, 2012, meeting was the third meeting Alex Bezanson was notified of and for reasons was unable to attend. Further, in Alex Bezanson's resignation letter, he stated he took a phone conversation on December 11, 2012, he had with Selectman Franny, and I quote, "I took that as a threat," end quote. To date, no police report has been filed for Alex Bezanson's accusations against Selectman Franny for threat. And concluding in Alex Bezanson's resignation letter from the Conservation Commission, he states, and I quote, "This letter will be copied to the State Ethics Commission as well as the Attorney General. I am asking for a full investigation into the actions of both Selectman Burbine and Selectman Franny," end quote. To date, neither party noted by Mr. Bezanson in his resignation letter has been contacted regarding an investigation. Integrity and doing what is right to support the residents of Abington is our obligation and duty. Without integrity, nothing else matters. As President Eisenhower stated eloquently many years ago, "The supreme quality for leadership is unquestionably integrity. Without it, no real success is possible, no matter whether it's on a section gang, a football field, an army field, or an office," end quote. We have two candidates for the Conservation Commission before us. I believe the choice is clear. Mr. Brian Benson has the qualifications, experience, and respect of the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission. Today's Abington is about us moving forward. We are updating our open space and recreation plan, and I think it's critical to have a leader on the Conservation Commission who will be able to build a dialogue with open space and Conservation Commission. Please join me, my fellow Selectmen, in support of Brian Benson for the Open Sea and Conservation Commission. I will now, I will submit this to Nancy Hirst for the record, and I will also insert Mr. Bezanson's resignation letter from 2013. At this time, I will hear any motions--
Mr. Chairman, since you've made accusations--
Mr. Bezanson--
I would like to reply to those.
Mr. Bezanson, according to Mass General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 20, it is at the chair's discretion of public comment. Public comment is closed.
I'll reply. Let me ask.
I'm sure you will.
Okay. Hold on. Just hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. First of all--
I'm sorry, Mr. Donovan.
Yeah. First of all, Alex, you can't do this. You just can't do this. You're talking about stuff that happened over a decade ago.
Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? Conflict of interest, Mr. Donovan?
Calm down.
Conflict of interest, Mr.--
First of all, calm down. Second of all, I'm going to finish what I have to say. This was over a decade ago, and I'm sorry that you chose to attack an applicant. If I were on the fence, you just pushed me the other way. I do not like when Selectmen do what you just did. That is uncalled for. And I, and then not to allow him to respond is indefensible. You cannot lobby, lob, an accusation at somebody and then tell them to sit down. That's not democratic. And don't lecture me on that issue. As it relates to this particular issue, I'm incensed that you would choose this meeting to attack an applicant coming before this board. And I'm going to tell you right here and now, if I were on the fence, I'm going the other way, based on the way you've just treated him.
You're entitled to your opinion, Mr. Donovan.
I am, and I, and I have a vote.
You are not entitled to your own facts.
I know the facts. I was sitting on the board when this happened 10 years ago.
Mr. Donovan, this is exactly from the resignation letter, and it's from the documentation here at the State Ethics and the Attorney General's Office in the town of Abington. So--
You're wrong. You're wrong, and you're out of line.
That's your opinion.
That is my opinion. All right?
I'm making a motion to appoint Alex Bezanson to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
All right. There was a motion and a second for Mr. Bezanson, and there was a second by Mr. Donovan. Any other motions to be heard? I will make a motion to appoint Brian Benson to the Conservation Commission.
Okay, gentlemen. Break it down. I'm going to be the neutral person here. I know that we all have our issues in the past, in the present. We need, it's hard to get volunteers for any board. We all know that. It's a thankless job. But we need volunteers. We need experienced volunteers. We need people to come forward, and we don't want all this to discriminate or not have anybody come to these meetings. So just on these applicants, I am going to vote for Brian Benson for conservation.
We would have to make, someone would have to make a second.
Okay. Anybody makes a second. And only for the fact that I like the liaison between the two, the two departments. That's it.
Suzanne, you talking as an associate member?
No, I'm talking as a full member. I don't believe in associate members. They have no voting rights. They go to meetings, they have opinions, but they can't speak at the meetings. We've had this at the senior center, the Friends meetings, COA. I'm just not a firm believer of that, and that is only my opinion.
All right. Thank you. Well, there is only, there's only one nomination on the floor. No, there has not been a second to Mr. Benson's nomination. I will hear again if there's any, any second.
I'll second Brian for your, for the sake of--
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. So there's, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chapin. Okay. We will now take, if there are no other motions to be heard--
I would like a discussion before we vote.
Okay. Sure. We'll have a discussion. Open up for discussion before we vote.
I just, I just want to say that what you did was put the town in serious liability. I'm afraid that that's what happened tonight. If you can't prove these accusations, the town can be sued for quite a money. I don't know what you did. I'm not a lawyer, so maybe I'm wrong.
Mr. Chair--
And I really hope I am.
Well, Ms--
I was definitely disappointed with the way this whole process went tonight.
Let me respond to that, Mr. Chapin. The reason I've come forward, especially on the beginning half of my comments, was there were two residents who reached out to me, who were there that night at Lucy's Bar, who have no relation to this board, who have not been elected, who can confirm that that happened that night.
I just hope you can prove what you accused.
And I think it's extremely dangerous to put somebody on the conservation, back on conservation, who had to resign because of accusations of wrongdoing he was doing, and put someone back on that. We need to be moving forward as this town. Brian Benson is qualified-- Brian Benson is qualified on open space and will be a great voice on the Conservation Commission. And, and to everything that's been said about me here tonight, I did not want to have to do this. I did not want to have to speak the truth. But integrity matters, and that's why I've done what I've done. You can attack me all you want, Mr. Donovan.
I'm not attacking you. I'm stating the facts.
Stating the facts? You didn't for the 2013. I'm sorry. And you weren't there for the 2022 thing. And you are very well aware that residents have approached you with that.
All right, move on. Move on. Enough of the pontification. Move on. It's called for your vote.
All right, is there anything else to be heard from the board?
I think we've heard enough.
All right, thank you. All right, now we will go for vote. The vote is for Mr. Bazanson for Conservation Commission. Right, Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Right, yes by Mr. DiMaggio. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan, yes. Ms. Justburg?
No.
No, my Ms. Justburg. Chair votes no. Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chapin, yes. That is a three to two vote. Congratulations, Mr. Bazanson. All right. Time being 7:01, we did have, I will go, I'm going to go to public appointments. We did have a hearing scheduled at 6:50 PM. Request for Class 2 license for Top End Auto LLC 225 Brockton Ave. For 25 cars for sale with 34 spaces. I will now hear any motions to open the hearing. All right, motion and there's a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, thank you. There was a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, oh, sorry, excuse me. My apologies. Mr. DiMaggio?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. DiMaggio. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Chapin, yes. Yes, okay. Now we have opened the public hearing. Do we have anyone from Top End Auto LLC 225 Brockton Ave with us? Sure, come on up. State your name and address and what you're trying to do here.
Hello, I'm Caesar Alcory. I'm from 14 Pasture, Brooklyn, North Alabro, Mass. I'm here to apply for a Class 2 dealer license so we can sell some cars at 225 Brockton Ave.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn it over to the board. Are there any questions from the board?
If I could, you're, pardon me, you're asking for 25 cars for sale?
Yes.
Total packing on the property, 34, allowing for customer and employees, is that correct? And your hours on Monday through Friday, nine to six, and then Saturday, nine to, looks like five?
Five.
Five, five, is it? Okay. You've met all the requirements. There was something, give me one quick second here from the building inspector. Yeah, yeah, here it is. Thank you.
But I think that was taken care of.
This is, so anything the building inspector had requested you to do, you've completed, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, okay.
And there does, there does appear to be no issues from the Health Department or the Treasurer's Department, or the Treasurer Department. Treasurer's Office, I should say.
Anything from police and fire?
Police did respond late today that they're okay with it. And I haven't heard from fire, but we won't let them open if fire is not happy.
Say that again?
I said, we haven't heard back from fire.
Oh, wow.
However, they won't open until
Right.
the fire department is satisfied.
Do you know offhand when we, when Nancy requested the fire department to?
I think it all went out in one email, whatever that initial email. I followed up with them earlier this afternoon.
So the Thursday, the 21st of December?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fire's been really busy. The fire department's been really busy.
Been a lot going on since the 21st of December, yeah, I mean.
Thank you. Is there any, Mr. DiMaggio, any questions or comments?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. DiMaggio. Any, any comments or questions from the public? Okay, hearing none. Are there any further comments or questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to, to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second, all right. Any other motions to be heard? Hearing none. Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. The public hearing is now closed. I will now entertain any motion, I will entertain any motion regarding the request for Class 2 license for Top End Auto LLC 225 Brockton Ave.
I move, we approve the license as submitted.
All right.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any other motions to be heard? All right, hearing none. We will now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. DiMaggio on Mr. Donovan's motion. Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
Yes. Chair votes yes. Mr. Chapin? Yes. Okay, thank you. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now back to our action discussion items. Vote to open the annual town meeting warrant for the April 1st, 2024 annual town meeting.
Please do so.
Oh, yes. And put on this before we open it, do we, do, should, actually, no. We should set when the warrant is to close. Do you have a specific date, Scott, that you felt would be appropriate?
I believe, actually, I believe it was February 14th. Let me take a quick look here.
Is it Thursday? Oh, sorry, no, I lied. It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, our concern is just time for planning board hearings. So if we want to coordinate it with a date that this board meets, it would be February 12th.
February 12th?
Yep.
Okay, move, we open the warrant tonight, and then with the closing date of Monday, February, February, is that present? No, the week next is Presidents' Day here. The 19th? Yeah, I think it's.
Yes, the 19th.
19th, okay. An ending date of February 12th.
February 12th, all right. There is a motion on the floor by Mr. Donovan. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, there is a second, okay. Is there any other motions to be heard on the floor regarding this? All right, hearing none. We will take up a roll call vote to open the annual town warrant, and then to close it on February 12th. Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
All right, yes by Mr. DiMaggio. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
Yes. Chair votes yes. Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so the annual town warrant is open and will close on the business day of February 12th, 2024. And just a reminder, the annual town meeting will be on April 1st, 2024. All right, the next action and discussion item on our agenda is discussion on regulating the speed of traffic on Hancock Street. I put this on our agenda. I went to the September, there was a meeting in September with Mastod and the DPW Department, or DPW Director John Stone, to talk about the safety improvements that they want to make at the intersection of Chestnut Street and Hancock Street. As most residents know, Mastod chose on the roundabout option. But in preparation of the construction of the roundabout in 2026, Mastod and DPW did suggest that the speed be reduced on Hancock Street to prepare for it. At the same time, also, we, since 2023, at the annual town meeting, the town voted to give the Selectmen the authority to reduce speeds in thickly settled areas. And I think just even for my own family alone, the Haggardys, it was definitely not as built up over by Hancock Street as it was even 30, 40 years ago. Actually, even 20 years ago, to be honest. So I think this would be a great, great step for us as a town in preparation for the roundabout. One of the things that Mastod said about with the roundabout option is to, would create lower speeds. So if we can start preparing residents and travelers right now, I think that'd be great for us. I did reach out to Scott to talk to the Police Department, the Fire Department, and to the DPW Department to make, to ensure that we, that they have the approval of this. And specifically with the Police Department, making sure that they could, they have the enforcement to make sure that people are driving the 30 miles per hour so reduced. So the, the speed that I am suggesting to this board, and I don't think this will be the first and only time we talk about this. I think we should have public hearings in the future. Even though the town did grant us the authority, I think it would be important to get information from OCP, from OCPC, and also from the public as well. But one thing that, I was in attendance at that meeting, and I heard from residents was the speed needs to be reduced. So I think, and that was my biggest thing, why I wanted this on the agenda and see if we can take action for doing this. Even, you know, playing the Easter Bunny at the VFW last year, I could even, even staying there waving at people driving by.
KFC.
Oh, the KFC, I'm sorry. Oh, jeez. Thank you, Tim. Just even seeing the speed. There are a lot of families in, off of Hancock Street, in the Chestnut Street area, so I want to make sure we're keeping people safe. But now I will turn it back to the board and hear what your, your thoughts and comments.
Just a quick question. You mentioned that the town meeting, we voted to, that, the town voted to give Selectmen to change speed limits in thickly settled zones or non-thick?
I think we had to declare them, the board could look at it and declare whether it was a safety zone or certain zones where.
Because Hancock Street's technically not a thickly settled zone.
No.
Not the last time we had looked at.
No, and actually, you know, if I may, I mean, this comes up every few years. Even since I've been here, but even prior to that, we have some, some data on it. I had actually asked at the time Deputy Chief Cutter to look into this when I first started. And he sort of, you know, they went up there and they did some observations. And what they, what they really found was, although it seems like people are speeding at a, you know, some sort of great rate, they're not. There are those occasional ones, but for the most part, that average speeds was at that time somewhere around 37 miles to an hour. And I guess at one point also, according to John Stone, there was an attempt to lower the speed, I'm guessing on all of Hancock Street from 40 to 30, which didn't go over big according to this email that I had from them.
I was said on the board that then we were handcuffed at that point by state law.
Yeah, and at that point, the data didn't support it.
Right.
But what it does support, and what I think Alex is pointing out that I think is a probably good idea, is that we can look in and around where that, that intersection is and go within a quarter mile of any way of that intersection, and that should be considered a safety zone where we could put the speed somewhere at 20 miles an hour, which is probably a good approach.
Because right now, coming down the hill into the rotary is 25. Coming up from Hancock, excuse me, from Randolph is 35. And the rest of Hancock from Randolph to Field Dairy is 40.
And so, the conversation I had with Chief Del Pappo, what they're doing in the interim is they're going to do some observation for us and try and see what's, what is going on, what they can come up with for some information and some, you know, sort of anecdotal, what's actually happening out there. They're going to put up some speed trailers also with the signs, and they're going to do some a little more enforcement that you'll see up there, and try and get some, some data for us that we can use. There's probably certain areas, more than others, that I think it's, it's probably not one size fits all, that one end to the other is going to be 30 miles an hour, or 40 miles, or whatever. But certainly, I think definitely we could do something sooner than later at the intersection in probably 500 feet in all directions.
Well, if I could. I, I think the issue is more, it's the entire street. I think when you're looking, you've got, I've gotten complaints of down the Brooklyn Street end too. So from, and I can tell you from experience, my mother lives off of Nardone, and for me trying to get on Lincoln to Hancock is, you know, you pray and you go. And the cars do come whipping down there, so I don't know what the, I'd like to see a couple of things. One, if we could get OCPC to do a traffic count, I'd like to know what the traffic volume is, number one, on that street. And secondly, a good move in the police, you know, to get some sort of an idea on what the actual speed is. I can tell you from experience that I would tend to think they're going a little bit above the speed limit from what I, from what I, yeah, from what I've observed. But I do think it's an entire street issue, not just down the end where the roundabout is going. So I think we've got to take that into consideration. If we could bring that information together, then we should have a public hearing. So then notify the residents, and then they can come up and tell us what their thoughts are before we take that action. But in order to comply with the law, I would suggest that we do have to, A, gather the information first, B, have the public hearing so the residents have input, and then C, we can make a determination as to what our vote would be at that stage of the game.
Okay, perfect. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? All right, I will now turn it over to open it to the public. Any comments or questions from the public? Sure, come on up to the podium. State your name and address.
My name's Robert Hall, 62 Hancock Street. The way I see it is people come up Brooklyn Street, which is 35 miles an hour, which they're probably going 40, 45. They get on Hancock, 40, 45, 50. And they just keep going. There's nobody there to stop them, to slow them down. We all have bad driving habits. I know that. Things have changed, but we have to slow these people down. It's a residential area. It's thickly settled. People walk on the streets, ride their bikes. Today, they don't plow the sidewalks, so now you're walking the street if you're walking your dog or riding a bike, whatever. So it's, it's dangerous. Landscape companies park on the sidewalk, so now you're going to walk around the landscape carts in the street to get around. I'm not walking on somebody's lawn. I don't want people walking on mine. It's a sidewalk. It's for us, for the people. They got to slow it down. Now they're going 40, 50 past Lincoln Street, and they get up on Hancock Street Hill, and all of a sudden, they're going down the hill at 40 miles an hour. No wonder why there's action. They got to slow it down to 30. The whole street. The other day, I was looking out the window. There was a tractor going down the road. Two cars passed the tractor, and it's a double solid line. This is what is going on on Hancock Street. And they have a preschool right a couple of doors down. What happens if that was in session? We have to do something as a, as a community. It's, it's just getting out of control, and I don't know what the answer is. I suggest 30 miles an hour, maybe even put a three-way stop sign at the top of Lincoln Street with flashing red lights. Stop, 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 and then continue on. Same thing with coming up Hancock Street the other way. They go up the hill, 40 miles an hour. There's nobody to stop. Why go down Route 18 to 139? Because you have lights, 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 lights. So let's go up Brooklyn Street, make that a cut through. And that's what they're doing. Nobody stops. I don't, I don't know what the answer is. We have to do something.
We're with you. We're with you.
I just hope that we can do something as a, as a community because it's thickly settled. It's dangerous.
I lived on Hancock for 25 years, so.
Well, I've been there since 56, so. I've been there a few years, but it.
It was a lot quieter back then.
Yeah, and people's driving habits are terrible. Like today, like where Alex Bazanson did with. I went down Hancock Street to go across 139. There's a guy coming down the wrong way. And I started going like one way.
You'd have to change that road to come over like that, they still find a way. Sponge strip.
People just don't, I don't know if they don't care or they're not paying attention, but, and then we had Bridgewater sand and gravel running up and down Hancock Street all day long, for weeks and weeks, to go to Chestnut Street to take all the land over. It's a residential area. It's a residential area. These trucks are going forty miles an hour with a heavy load. What's it doing to our town streets? I don't know, I just, I, I'm looking for help, I guess we all are, so.
Absolutely. Well, as Suzanne was saying, we're with you.
I appreciate it.
We want to do the right steps in order to, to get this done.
And it's hard, because I know the, and I don't know if they want to do community policing, but there's not, I don't see anybody doing radar or anything. They don't plow the sidewalks up there, it's dangerous. Thank you for letting me cry on your shoulders.
Anytime.
Anytime.
Come on in.
Okay. Oh, one more person?
Yeah.
Go on up, name and address, please.
Brian McDer, four seventy-seven Hancock Street. I just want to applaud you all for taking this up. I, I think this is a really important issue. The Chestnut Hancock intersection has got lots of attention for the multitude of accidents that happened there over the last many years. I've only been on the street for six years. I can tell you in that six-year period, sort of living right in the middle of Hancock Street, the traffic, the amount of traffic that is coming up Hancock Street is significantly greater than it was even six years ago. I think we live in a world with ways and all of these tools that, you know, help us all to get where we need to go when traffic is, is difficult, but it's turned, because of that, it's turned Hancock Street into a thoroughfare, as opposed to a residential neighborhood street. And so I, I think controlling the traffic speed is even more critically important today than it might have been in the past, because the volume of traffic is also significant. We all know that we all, many of us have, as, as my, you know, fellow resident mentioned, a, a bad habit of believing that, you know, well, we, the police will give us ten miles an hour. So forty becomes fifty.
Yeah.
And, and oftentimes, that's the good drivers. And those who are not in that category, those who just simply ignore the, the speed limit altogether, are going significantly faster. And while I defer to the, 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 the police officers for their observations, but one thing I would say is they really need to make sure that they're making observations at times when the traffic is the most difficult. Between the four to six, seven o'clock hour, the traffic is very busy. However, just after that, just before that, and same thing in the mornings, or just on either side of the rush, is when we tend to see the fastest drivers. Because it's those people who maybe are going homework from work late or whatnot, who now see a wide-open road. And, you know, some nights, my wife and I are sitting in the living room, and it feels like the house is coming up, off the foundation, when someone flies down that street. Particularly, and I'll just close with this, particularly the fact that we are living on a street, just like Lincoln, which has a sidewalk only on one side of the street. I happen to be lucky enough that I have my mailbox right in front of my house. Every time I watch my, my neighbor across the street come across to get his mail, I always wonder if he's going to make it. Because the traffic is coming by so fast. And to your point, if I could just add one more thing, to the point of Chestnut and Hancock, I, I think Lincoln and Hancock is also not recognized as much, and Mr. Dunlop, you raised it. I, I think it's really important to recognize that the number of vehicles that have tried to make that turn and ended up taking out the light pole at the next house down on the right-hand side of Hancock, because we, luckily, we are on the other circuit, but we watch that side of the street go dark. Every time a car tries to make that turn, and the car coming towards them is going so fast, that they veer off and end up on the sidewalk and get hit by the telephone pole. So anything we can do to reduce the traffic speed, not just at the, at the Chestnut intersection, but for the length of the road, and anything the, the, the police department can do to help with enforcement on that, would be greatly appreciated by all of us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, can you reach out to John and see if he has any, like, dangerous curve sign, or maybe check the sign that, that curve? Because that, that is kind of, can be a tough curve, especially when I do it on two wheels, it's very good.
In the truck?
In the tractor trailer. Yeah, but he may, he, because last time, we asked him for something, oh, he had no problem, he had it up in a couple days, so.
Yeah, that'll happen again.
If he hasn't, that'll be good.
Thanks. Thank you. My name is Kevin Dunlop, I'm resident of five eighty-eight Hancock, lived there about three years. Before my remarks, I do want to thank our Board of Selectmen for the work that you do year-round, not just in the monthly meetings, but I know there's significant time and fail to recognize that sometimes, so I want to say thank you for that. I'm speaking to urge the board to reduce the forty mile an hour speed limit on Hancock for several reasons, some of those have been mentioned by my fellow neighbors tonight. First of all, to harmonize the current confusion creating by the ten mile an hour difference between Lincoln and Hancock. And then the side streets that go off that, most of those are either thirty or twenty-five. And so when I first moved here, knowing that Lincoln is just as long a shot as Hancock is from Chestnut to, say, Rockland. And when I looked at the satellite map, my own independent density study, if you will, there are more neighborhoods connecting to Hancock than there are perhaps even Lincoln. And so for the same measure of safety be afforded to the Hancock residents that are on Lincoln, even in spite of people taking advantage of the speed limit, it doesn't make sense to me that Hancock's forty and Lincoln's thirty. So I'm speaking to that reduction to harmonize those things. And then, as someone mentioned, to also call attention to the increased level of heavy commercial trucking using Hancock, Rockland Streets to avoid the light, I'm assuming at the intersection with eighteen and one thirty-nine. That's increased in my three years here today. I saw three today, and they were flatbed trailers behind. I've seen the crane company that's up on one thirty-nine will use that to cut off, not with a large crane, but the heavy trucks. And as you know, that's been recently repaved. The par-brum, problem is not so much the roads, as though that's a concern, but the time it takes to stop. It's just dangerous. Thirdly, and most importantly, I'm requesting the board take action to reduce the speed on Hancock, along with collaboration with our police department for appropriate monitor, monitoring for the safety of our residents. Now, that's the biggest concern. And I cross the road for my mailbox, as does half of Hancock Street. I cross the road to get to the sidewalk, as does Hancock Street. But everybody who lives on Hancock Street, you literally can take your life in your hands, not only walking or, when my wife heads out to the mailbox, I'll say to her almost every time, please look twice. It's just that fast. And so that's a, a major concern for me, and I believe that the decision should be skewed towards the safety of our residents, rather than the speed it takes for someone to arrive at a destination. I think that's the priority for us, and I appreciate the comments that I'm hearing from both the board and from the residents. And lastly, I would urge the board to consider and implement this change now, as soon as possible, rather than tie it simply to the construction timeline of the Chestnut Hancock intersection. That's some ways out, and I think this needs to happen sooner rather than later, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
I, I agree with you, and as you're talking, my sister, who lives up there, is texting me furiously, suggesting that I get on the stick, so.
Awesome. And I know, and I know Mastaut wants to reduce the speed even coming up to, or to, around the roundabout, when it eventually goes in anyways. But to your point, I think it's great, I think it would be perfect if we jump right to it.
And it's confusing up on Hancock Street, ten, forty, thirty, five, it's very confusing.
Absolutely. Sure, go on, name and address, please.
My name's Karen Law, for the seven forty Hancock Street. So I just want to thank you, like, for mentioning, like, the amount of traffic on the street, as well as the speed, because it is crazy amount of traffic, especially like you people have said, with, with the amount of, like, the gravel trucks and everything lately too. But it takes, like, forever just to get out of the trap, out of the driveway, and, like, people come flying up the hill from, like, the corner store area, and you try to back out of your driveway, and you, you can't, like, they don't even slow down, you know? And I was rear-ended by somebody, just trying to turn into my driveway, and my turn signal on, and got rear-ended by somebody texting, trying to cross the street. I crossed the street as well. I brought up that issue with the post office, and they said, well, that's the way that it's set up. So, you know, it's, it's, it's very dangerous trying to get across the street just to get your mail. It's like playing Frogger, trying to get across the street just to get your mail. It's, it's, it's ridiculous. But also the, the timing too, because, like, it's not just peak hours during the day. Like, I hear people, like, even later at night, it's like a wide-open road, you know? People come flying up that street later at night, when there's not any traffic, they figure they can just go flying on through. And it's like the motorcycles and other cars, you, you hear them, they're doing, like, crazy speed, you know, sometimes like fifty or even better. Like, you can hear them going by your house, like, not even a second that they're going by your house. It's, it's ridiculous. And the sidewalks are all torn up, there's sidewalks on one side of the street only, so, you know, it's, it's difficult. And, you know, I, I really truly appreciate you taking up this issue, because it's very dangerous.
It used to be the, the most traffic up there was on a Sunday, when Mr. Gorman had the vegetable stand, so.
Yeah.
Been a little bit since that point. That's right?
Yeah, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Karen?
My name is Karen Butler, and I live at fifty-two Karen Lane. I do not live on Hancock Street, but all of the issues that have been brought up, I can attest to. It sounds like a speed dragway, night, morning, anytime. Getting out of Rockland Street is dangerous. Coming up Rockland Street from eighteen just to get down to your house is, it's dangerous. We have been centering on this roundabout when it's the straightaway, and it changes. And if you go on forty, and I don't go forty, I go thirty, thirty-five miles an hour in a thickly settled area, because that's the way it was in my mass driver's license since I was eighteen years old. So if you're going forty, fifty, sixty, and they're passing you on a double yellow line. Nobody knows what a double yellow line is. You've got, you've got them coming from Brockton, coming up Rockland to get to eighteen so that they can cut off the area that they don't have to go down, one twenty-three. You've got them coming up Rockland Street to go, God knows where, up to maybe, I don't know, Hancock, I mean, but to, it's dangerous. Children can't walk there. We walk our dogs, we walk ourselves. It's dangerous up there. And yet, it's, it's changed in the forty-six years that I've been there. And it's, it's, this is a nice place to live. I don't want to live in Brockton. I don't want to live in Quincy, where everything is going so fast. I like it in a town, that's what I came here for. And I think that's what mostly everybody else wants to. They want it, you know, to be able to get out of your driveway, to, to come safely, know that you're going to come, yeah. Exactly. There's no policing, there's nothing. So the town, I hope, takes that consideration. We can't wait for the roundabout. We're going to wait for somebody to get killed before, you know, the roundabout comes in.
Absolutely.
You won't wait?
Yeah.
Right. I know this is, I'm not an engineer, and I can't figure it out, but I do know this town, and thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. And in the meantime, too, Scott, can we talk to, can you talk to the chief, the police chief, just to make sure, ramping up enforcement on the street?
That's, yep, that's conversations we've been having.
Perfect.
Especially, you know, high visi, high visibility traffic enforcement, and something that they're, they're doing more of.
All right, thank you. Is there any, anything else heard from the public on this matter? All right, I will close, I will close it on public, public, or public comments for, for this agenda item. I'll turn it back to the board, anything else to be heard? All right, nothing else, all right? We will keep you guys informed and things like that, and definitely a public hearing in the future. All right, awesome. Next action discussion item is Abington Historical Commission update, Island Grove Veterans Day, uh, uh, excuse me, Island Grove Veterans Project and two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the American Revolution. So I, I serve on the Abington Historical Commission, and I just kind of wanted to give a little brief overview. The commission will come in to our board at some time in the near future. But currently, right now, through CPA funds and grants, the Historical Commission is in the middle of a project to put signage at Island Grove that are dedicated specifically for, for veterans. Looking right now, they're looking at the Memorial Bridge, the archway. There's also within the park, within the park as well, even maybe a little signage dedicating to Abington back in the Civil War, actually supplied the boots to the Union soldiers. So that was really, really cool. So that's some kind of CPA grant funding that we've been able to get, so absolutely awesome. And more will come out. Let's see, the other thing that was, and actually, fun fact, the nineteen-twelve birthday celebration of Abington, which actually put in the archway, was mostly funded by veterans. So that's a cool factoid. The two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the American Revolution is in twenty-twenty-six, but the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is starting celebrations and events next year. They have reached out to us, to the Historical Commission, for Abington to play a part in it. They want every municipality, the three-hundred-and-fifty-one, that if they had significant American revolutionary history, to then celebrate it here, in any way that we can. The commission has also floated the idea of creating a, a committee specifically for the celebrations. Obviously, we have Abington celebrates and things like that, but to have a committee specifically for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, for people who want to get involved, any local historians, so that will be exciting. We'll keep that up for the future. Unless there's any other comments or questions from the public about this matter, we'll move on to, hearing none. All right, we'll move on to the town manager report.
I don't really have a lot for you. Mostly, we were finishing up last year, working on the budget. We're actually in a good place as far as getting ahead of schedule from where we were last year. I know some of you probably heard of some of the state budget cuts today, and the governors. It, it's not a surprise to me that, that that's happening. They've been speaking for quite a while that their collections and revenues aren't where they had hoped they would be, they're just not hitting the projections that they put forward. At this time, though, the cuts, I did see a list of the cuts that are happening, and it doesn't appear that any of them will affect us in any way. I have been pretty pessimistic on any increases to state aid coming our way, so.
From what I understand, as, as it relates to the nine, nine C cuts, which is this fiscal year, next fiscal year, they've revised the revenue estimates down by a billion dollars, so I'm sure that'll have an impact.
Yeah, they say that, you know, that the housing crisis is not helping, the migrant crisis, they have other monies for, so that's not what's causing this, it's just, it's just really their collections of revenue, so. As you know, we mentioned the MMA, their annual conference is the nineteenth and twentieth. If you folks want to go, let me know, I can sign you up online. It is well worth it to spend some time there. I think you've all got some implications to some events. So as we also talked about, as far as Hancock Street goes, the police department is going to be out there doing some traffic enforcement, and it's going to be high visibility, they're going to do some radar boxes and observations, so they'll, they'll be working on that. I have two quick announcements. Firefighter Robert Newmeister is retiring on June thirtieth. Thirty-seven years, it's a little bit of a department, so. On June thirtieth, between twelve and three, they're having an open house at the station. Anybody wants to pop by and hang him?
January or June?
January, sorry. Yeah, right, January. You can go in June too, so. And I'd like to just recognize firefighter Derek Camani, recently completed the eighty-hour Massachusetts hazmat technician course, or read the messages in firefighting academy, and he took it on himself to do that, it's, it's a lot of work, it's a big commitment. And, you know, he's, he's, he's a great guy, does a lot for the town, so, very proud and happy for him, so. I think that's all I have for you.
All right, thank, thank you, Scott. If there are any updates from the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works, I know that, I know Crystal has done a great job, I know they put up some graphics in September about kind of what's going on with the, their process of, they put out to bid for a, for the improvements to the treatment, to the treatment plant for infrastructure and for PFAS. If they can, if she could put out something, or the department could put something out soon, just kind of saying what's going on now, I think that'd be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, awesome. Hearing nothing?
I move with your adjournment.
Okay.
A second.
Second, motion second, any, any other motions to be heard?
They've seen two eager, I'd like to discuss.
All right, hearing none, I will, is a roll call, Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. DiMaggio, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Jesper?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Chapin? Mr. Chapin? Yes, okay. The time being seven forty-one, I'd like to call the Abington Board of Selectmen meeting adjourned.